Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors' February 3 meeting. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Carroll?
Here.
Supervisor Elias? Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Bellego?
Brother.
Chair Bronson?
Here.
Let the record show, all members are present. Supervisor Carroll will participate telephonically.
Thank you. And now rise for the invocation to be offered by Ajahn Sarayud Ornanta of Boat Budadeta, with a pledge of allegiance to follow by Supervisor Elias.
Members of the Pima County Board of Supervisors, with authority which people in the whole Pima County entrust in you, may you work for the welfare, peace, and happiness of all people under your jurisdiction. May the awakening mind and compassionate heart arise within you. With your skillful understanding, skillful thinking, skillful speech, and skillful action, may you be responsive, constructive, and productive. For the welfare, peace, and happiness of all people, may all benefit. May all the blessings be upon you all. Satu, satu, satu. Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Introduce yourselves to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, our pause for pause is paused on the freeway somewhere stuck in traffic, so we won't be at this point moving on to pause for pause. I think now I'd like to take something out of order and move to our addendum agenda. Item number one, a presentation and a proclamation. And I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege and welcome our new civil deputy county attorney, Tom Weaver, to the dais. This is your first meeting, and hopefully you won't want it to be your last.[212.12][212.12](Laughter)
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Did you want to say anything, Alan?
I appreciate the opportunity. Look forward to working with this board as a citizen, as a taxpayer, and as a longtime county employee. I appreciate the performance that this board and Mr. Huckleberry have done over the last 10 years to get us through some very difficult economic times. I look forward to continue working with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to move to item one on the addendum, the presentation of a proclamation to Christopher L. Strobb, recognizing him and commending him for his dedicated service as chief civil deputy county attorney. And I think he was with us for over eight years. If someone would move that item?
Motion.
Motion and a second. There are no objections. We'll present the proclamation. Supervisor Elias? Will all the board members join me down below? And Supervisor Elias, will you do the honors of presenting the proclamation? And Chris, can we get you? And maybe Amelia and Barbara? Everybody, front and center. Chris, you have a grin on your face.[304.38][304.38](Laughter)
All right, ready? Well, thank you, Chris, for your hard work. And I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. And Chair Bronson is handing that to you. We were going to have all our pictures put on it, but we...[322.64][322.64](Laughter) I don't know what happened to that idea. Whereas Christopher L. Strobb has served as chief of the Pima County Attorney's Civil Division since 2006. Whereas under Mr. Strobb's leadership, the Pima County Attorney's Office Civil Division has provided the highest quality civil legal services on behalf of the county and its elected and appointed officials, furthering its mission of ensuing ethical, effective, and efficient county government. And whereas under Mr. Strobb's leadership, the Pima County Attorney's Office Civil Division has been committed to the principles integrity first, service before self, and the pursuit of excellence. And whereas under Mr. Strobb's leadership, the Pima County Attorney's Office Civil Division has provided legal services that have significantly benefited the citizens and the taxpayers of our community. Now therefore, the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and commends Christopher L. Strobb for his dedicated service as chief civil deputy county attorney, passed and adopted this third day of February 2015. Please be generous with your applause for Christopher.[398.12][398.12](Applause)
Well, madam supervisor, now you should know that it's dangerous to give a lawyer a microphone.
Yeah. You want to use the other one? The handheld one might work better. That one's cracking up.
Yeah, that's great.
Are we on?
Hold on.
Very good. Well, this is certainly an honor and a privilege. And it's been my honor and privilege to serve all of you for eight and a half years. And I'm going to miss that work. I'm going to miss working with all of you. But this proclamation brings out the excellent work, not only of me, but of the civil division that stands behind me, the volunteers, the legal processing support personnel.
And the board.
Yeah, let's have them stand right up there in place. They'll come to join us. Please, please. The legal secretaries, the paralegals, and the attorneys, they've done a wonderful job. They've worked all very hard on behalf of this board, on behalf of the other elected officials, and on behalf of the taxpayers of Pima County. And I'm so very, very proud to have been associated with this fine group of lawyers. They are really, truly one of the best law firms in this state. And it's been through the commitment of this board to help me hire really good people. And I want to thank Barbara so much for the opportunity to be her chief civil deputy after eight and a half years. Thank you so very, very much.
You're welcome. And I want to say that on behalf of myself and the office, and I know the members of the Board of Supervisors feel the same, we are very deeply appreciative and very grateful for the dedicated public service that you have given and the exemplary leadership and quality of legal advice that you have provided. Not only have the members of the Board of Supervisors in Pima County benefited from this, but all the citizens of Pima County as well. So, Chris, thank you very, very much. Deeply appreciated.
Chris, on behalf... I served for four years as chairman of this board, and obviously, I think we probably talked about at least once every week outside of this board meeting. And you've always been very, very professional, very thorough. And I've got to tell you, even when he was on vacation, he'd always respond to questions, just like that. And not to mention the entertainment that you have provided during executive sessions,[577.22][577.22](Laughter) which I obviously am obligated not to talk about.[582.12][582.12](Laughter)
Yes, Chris, we've really enjoyed working with you. And I think finally, after eight and a half years, you finally understood who the client was.[591.84][591.84](Laughter) And you might want to help Tom learn that lesson.
That's right.
Chris, I want to thank you. It's my first term, and I know there's been some contentious moments. And I really appreciate all that you've done to try to guide this board forward and help me during the process. And my staff and the direction that you've given us has been valuable. And I wish you all the best. I know you're going to be here for another year, but you're going to be slowly transitioning out. But I wish you all the best in your future endeavors and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that, you know, in my four years as chair also, you did a great job with us, Chris. And you've always served Pima County with the heart of a true Southern Arizonan. And that always showed through. And, you know, your intelligence and your ability to make calm, rational decisions has influenced this board greatly over eight and a half years. You should be very proud of that, as we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Amelia?
Chris is the best, and I don't want to belabor things, but you know, as a person and as a lawyer, I have the utmost respect and gratitude for everything that you've done for the county attorney's office, for Pima County, for the board supervisors, and the county administrator. And you will have a long legacy of greatness.
Do you want to wrap, Chris? It's a lot.[682.24][682.24](Laughter)
But I just want to wish Tom the best of luck. I think the board is in really good hands. I've known Tom for over 30 years. And he is one of those excellent attorneys in our division. I believe you're going to be really well-served.
Is your warning buzzer?
I don't have to worry. I'll let you hear it.
Thanks, Chris.
Supervisor Carroll? Supervisor Carroll?
Supervisor Carroll, are you still with us?
Did you get that all?
Yes, I am.
Did you want to say anything to Chris?
Well, I appreciate the chance, too. I have been a friend of Chris's, and I wish him the very best in his retirement. Chris will see you out on the trail. Good luck to you. And I'm grateful for all your service to us, as well as this community. And I wish you the very best in your retirement.
You're the one that gave him the most grief. Are you going to say anything?[761.36][761.36](Laughter)
Obviously, sitting up here is not an easy task, particularly when you have five or six people peppering you for answers in an instant. So I think Chris's demeanor and his desire to provide accurate answers is probably his strongest suit. He may not answer you immediately, but when he does, we all know it's right. And that's more important in an attorney than off-the-cuff responses to questions. Chris, thank you. Good luck. And you've got several cases you have to win. So don't relax too much.[807.28][807.28](Laughter)
Thank you. All right, we'll move back to the regular agenda. We have one requested amendment to the February 3 agenda. It's on the regular agenda, page 2, item 9, Recorder Unfinished Business. Staff is requesting that this item be continued to the meeting of February 17, 2015. There are no objections. We'll so amend the agenda. Okay, we will now move on to Call to the Public. I'd like to remind you to respect the rules of this chamber. Be respectful in your tone and abide by the rules of civility. And you have three minutes.
Good morning. Is this working now?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Richard Hernandez, and I'm a resident of Pima County. I wanted to bring up two things to the board today. The first one has to do with the vacancy of the sheriff of Pima County. I want to encourage the board to take a serious second thought about having an election. One of the problems the city of Tucson has with its appointed chief, as many of you probably saw on television, is he actually thought it was okay for a supervising sergeant to maliciously and capriciously clock a woman at the U of A basketball game. Maybe some of you saw that on TV. This is what happens when you have the head of the police department, such a vital and such an important position, who is appointed and not elected. In Pima County, we have the privilege of electing our sheriff. So I want to say thank you to him for his service. I'm disappointed that he only got elected in November, and here we are, February 4th, and he actually got put into his new office in January. Less than 45 days later, we have the need for a new sheriff. But I think it's really important for the board to consider that the people should pick Pima County's number-one cop. The sheriff needs to understand that he's responsible to the community, to the voters, to the people, not only to you as a board, but to us. So I'd like to encourage that. The second thing I'd like to talk about is finances. I want to let you know that obviously I have a lot of concerns. We already know that Pima County pays the highest taxes in Arizona. We know that just recently, at your encouragement, we passed a new provision to have a new animal shelter. There was an additional tax added. Now I understand that the county manager is asking for hike, for water, and sewer. If that happens, we'll have a third increase in a year's time. And then, of course, we're looking at the bond, which I understand there's a bond committee already out there working. I think it's very important for you to understand, and this particularly, I want to address you, Ramon, because you're in my district. If you think the people in Southern Tucson, South Tucson, are going to let you raise your taxes four times, you're greatly mistaken. I will take a special interest in making sure that you're not on this board. It's impossible. People who work for a living, if they're lucky, in fact, if they work for Pima County, they get 2% annually, more or less. It's not working with our taxes. We have to take a look at reducing Pima County's expenditures. Maybe take a clue from our new governor, who says no more taxes, and let's figure out how we can reduce our state budget. I want to encourage the same. We can't keep adding on and adding on and adding on. The people are suffering. So think about both of those things. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez, let me remind you, respectful means addressing board members by their title and their surname. Christopher Cole?
I did not ask for a call to the public. I asked...
That's not a hearing, and so I'm letting you speak now.
I thought it was a hearing. I thought it was a identified as a hearing, which I...
Addendum item number four. It was what you... And that's not a hearing.
Okay. I thought it was identified as a hearing.
No.
Because I also have asked to speak on Agenda Item 17.
I'm not sure it was a hearing. We can speak then.
Yeah, okay. My name is Christopher Cole. I'm a resident of Tucson. I'm the first vice-chair of the Pima County Libertarian Party. The proposal that the public have a greater say in the Pima County budget is one that the Pima County Libertarian Party approves of, endorses, and advocates. And I'd like to thank Supervisor Valdez for putting it on the addendum and pushing it. And I also would like to thank those of the other supervisors who support it for their supportfulness. It ain't your money. It's our money. And we deserve to know what you're doing with it. And we deserve to have a say in when we think you're wasting it, when you're... Well, the public deserves a say. And even if the public rambles on and on and on and on and on, like I tend to do, I have a nice, nice speech written up for this. It was only four hours long, but I forgot it. I left it on my printer at home. The point is, especially with the improved communications and modern technology, the public needs to know and needs to have their say. And obviously, this is no disparagement, but you, as the Board of Supervisors, need to listen. So the Pima County Libertarian Party officially endorses the idea of the public hearings, expanded public hearings, and commends everyone who supports it on the board. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
My name is Vicki Davis. I'm a resident of Pima County for a long time. And I want to thank you very much for putting the Call to the Public at the beginning of the meetings. It really is very helpful. Thank you for listening to that. I was astounded when I heard that Mr. Huckleberry was advocating raising our property taxes again. I immediately called his office and, anyway, eventually emailed to express how harmful this is to those of us who are on fixed incomes, who are retired, who are poor, or even who are middle class. But he simply doubled down, informing me that he thinks we should also raise the gas tax, because it hasn't been raised in 25 years, and that we would just have to agree to disagree. But that argument doesn't... Isn't logical, because raising the gas tax just because it hasn't been raised is no better an argument than lowering the gas tax, because it hasn't been lowered in 25 years. Or keeping the gas tax the same, because it has been the same for 25 years. It's illogical and doesn't make any sense. This kind of response is not what I expect of a supervisor we pay over $300,000 a year for. I expect you to listen to the blessing that was given, where you're concerned with the welfare, the well-being. Use skillful thinking, speech, action. Be responsive, constructive, and productive. I have to disagree with Mr. Weaver's assessment that you have taken us through difficult economic times. Rather, you have waged economic jihad on both of us who can't afford it. I expect you to come up with better responses than blaming the state, increasing spending on your pet projects, and raising taxes, whereas all the money gone that you've been given to spend on our roles, and now you have to maneuver your way all the way from Craycroft to Pima, to Speedway to Stone, to avoid dangerous things. I urge you to reconsider solving all your problems by raising taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jerry Otoboni, and I live in Ora Valley. Mr. Huckleberry, because he can't live within his budget and do some cutting, wants to raise your property taxes again, even though he just raised them, and a nonpartisan group stated that that was a very bad idea in a bad economy. Seniors and others who are all living on a fixed income are expected to live within their budget, even if it means in the summer raising their air conditioning to 86 and in the winter dropping it to 59 to save money, some even cutting back on food purchases. In Los Angeles, they have 10 million taxpayers, and the salary for their administrator is $340,000, which is only $20,000 less than Mr. Huckleberry. In San Diego, they're 5 million, and their administrator is being paid $187,000. In Maricopa County, with a $2 million administrator... I'm sorry, $2 million people, their administrators pay $220,000 a year. Pima County only has 999,000 people, and Mr. Huckleberry is paid $320,000, and that doesn't include any other things he gets, $20,000 less than LA County, and $100,000 more than Maricopa. Shocking. In this state, with our taxes going up and being the highest, people are leaving. Who would want to come to Pima County? It is obvious that Mr. Huckleberry is overpaid and not doing a very good job. We, the taxpayers, are paying for a lobbyist up in the state. His contract is for $140,000 a year, plus $190 an hour. We have an organization called the CSA, County Supervisors Association, who would pay $89,000 a year. They could do a job as... You know, for the lobbyists. Mr. Huckleberry can't say he did not know what the governor was doing. It was in the news. And because it was in the news, and his lobbyist was not doing his job, and would have told Mr. Huckleberry, then apparently, he did not tell Mr. Huckleberry, and the lobbyist is doing a lousy job as well. Either Mr. Huckleberry needs to do his job in cutting on his spending or leave and let someone else who can do a better job, because apparently, he's not capable anymore. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lou Sampson. I'm from Green Valley. And I've only been coming to these meetings for maybe a couple of months, but I have noticed some patterns emerging, and that is group think. And the first time I saw it was when Supervisor Miller voted no on two contracts, and the four of you voted yes. And then she explained why she voted no, and it was because there was lack of information and incomplete contracts, which makes perfect sense to me, why to vote no. But that was my first example of group think. The second assemble was on the discretionary policy, spending policy. Twice, she tried to bring that up for a vote, and four of you voted to continue the policy. So finally, you voted no, and I thank you for that. But that was another example of group thinking. And now Supervisor Miller has brought up the open study session. She tried it once previously, and four of you voted to not do it. So now, I hope today, you can vote for it, because I don't understand why anybody wouldn't want the public to see where our money's going. I don't know. It could be just, number one, you think we're really stupid, and we don't know how to read a budget. Or, number two, you're hiding something. That's all I can think of it is. And the only solutions Mr. Huckleberry ever comes up with is raising our taxes, raising our fees, let's have another bond. We are bonded sky-high in this county. We can't afford anymore. I really want to thank Supervisor Miller for bringing this up today again. And I hope that maybe with new eyes, public eyes, looking at the budget, we can find some ways, which I'm sure is in there. We can find programs that are redundant. We can find programs that need to be stopped, because they are no longer applicable. And I want to thank her for including citizens in this process, because we haven't been included for a long time. And I urge you to please allow the public to have a study session on this budget, because it's not only the right thing to do, it is the moral thing to do. So please think of that when you're voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Gwin?
Good morning. My name is Eric Gwin. I'm a...
I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
Oh, that's okay. It happens all the time. It's Gwin, like Penguin. That clears it up.
I'll remember that now.
I'm a resident of Pima County. I first wanted to express my gratitude for the board tabling the agenda item to reduce the capacity of Elephant Head Bridge before any community meetings had been scheduled. I just wanted to let you know that there are many of the residents in... I just wanted to let you know that there are many of the residents in the Elephant Head community, they're very sincere about finding a reasonable way to make sure the bridge is repaired and maintained so that we have continued access to our homes. That bridge is the only paved access to the community. All the other roads, as you may know, are simply utility roads, and restricting access on that bridge would restrict not just construction traffic, but also school buses as well as other vehicles, which would be a hardship on the families out there. And I also wanted to thank Supervisor Carroll's office for getting back to us and giving us the information to pass along to the Pima County Transportation Department so that we can voice our concerns to them as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we've got a meeting coming up Monday to discuss this, and you're welcome to attend.
Okay. Monday morning.
Monday morning. You can contact my office, I can get you the information, but we're meeting with them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reverend Kirk Reed?
I'm Reverend Kirk Reed. I'm a United Methodist pastor, and I represent the Pima County Interfaith Council. We are 30 congregations, approximately 30,000 members and voters. And I'll just throw in parenthetically that my wife and I intentionally decided to move to Pima County because of the quality of life and the services that are provided. Our executive team is strongly endorsing the idea of open budget hearings, where not only the public can participate, but where the supervisors can respond and ask questions. One of our major emphases this year is, I guess we call it civic education or civic engagement. Too many voters are, I guess, you'd say disengaged, or alienated, or just kind of apathetic. And we hope that, as our organization encourages the voters to be engaged, that that'll be possible as you go through the budget hearing process. So, an open and fully transparent budgeting process is our, is our goal, and we appreciate a vote in that direction. Thanks very much.
We have several R speakers, but I noticed that our Paws have arrived. And Officer, you want to introduce us to our star of the day?
First, I'd like to apologize if-
Well, you made it.
There was a major truck fire on I-10.
It was a cabbage truck, I understand.
I-
No, it was. It was cabbage. Okay, so we have Ryder, is that his name?
Yes, and Better Late Than Never. This is Ryder. Ryder is about two years old. He is a mixed breed. I think he suffers from ground dog syndrome. He just kind of fades into the background. When Ryder came to us, he was not in a good way. He was, he was cut up. He's healed up now, but you can still see some of his scars. I'm not sure exactly what happened to him, but our veterinary staff got him worked up. But his coat, yes, thank you for the kiss. His coat looks a little rough, but he is, he is well behaved, Ryder. Let's see if we can get him to walk with me. Sit, sit. You know this, we work on it. He's nervous. Anyway, he walks very well on the leash. He, he was actually adopted out and returned because they said he was too strong for their little seven-year-old to walk him. First of all, you don't put your seven-year-old on the other end of the leash with a good-sized dog. But, that being said, he is the most well-behaved dog. He's one of these that likes to lean against you, and I find myself, I'll kind of start to drift over a little bit because he loves to have contact. And I think he would just be a wonderful addition to anyone's family. I mean, somebody that would just give him love and give him time, he would soak it up and return it tenfold. But he can be adopted for the cost of his license, which is $15. You can't beat that kind of deal. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ryder. You had a nice long ride today, huh? All right, we'll return to call to the audience, Nancy Newman?
I'm Nancy Newman. I live in Oral Valley. My concern about the increase in taxes is that you have no credibility. And I've just started coming this year, and it just seems like that you want more and more and more, that money grows on trees, and that once you get it, we never know where it goes. Now, because gas is low, you want to put a tax on, but we're not assured that that's going to go to our roads, because everything in this community has been ignored for years and years and years. And I think that's very disrespectful to the public, to our personal safety, to our welfare and prosperity, and to the future of Tucson. You've absolutely let us go to trash. How can we possibly expect you to take our money again and follow through with what you say it's for? I mean, corners, intersections are done three times. You hire people that don't even know what they're doing out there, holding up traffic. Today, we don't have bus pull-offs, and, I mean, I know part of this is a city, but you should, I wish I had a camera to watch me drive from Oral Valley to over to Morana. And all the cars are weaving this way and that way, and this way and that way. It's ridiculous. We look so bad. I have no faith in you. I, and people have no idea, I had no idea until I came, anyway. I've lost faith. You have no credibility. You're going to have to prove yourself and actually have an audit of where all of our money goes before I think any bonds or taxes should be increased or voted on. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Avani?
I'm Craig Avani. I'm here in two capacities, as a county resident and also as the Executive Director of the Arizona Sonoran Desert Museum. Those that know that the Pima County bond is planned for 2015 and that the museum is included in that would expect that that would be the sole reason I'm here to speak, because of us having a project that is supposed to be a part of it. That is very, very near and dear to our hearts, and of course, I'm blessed to represent an organization that has tremendous draw for Tucson, that about 13% of the visitors coming to this community state that that's why they came here. So, it's a wonderful thing for us to stay at the top of our game and to be able to keep reinvesting, which we do on a continual basis. It really helps for us to have the infusion that could come from the bond. But I'm also here in regards as a county resident and a voter. I've been here for 38 years. And I know that there's a lot of concern about spending bond funds and taxes and everything, and I'm certainly not insensitive to that. But as much as we can't necessarily spend our way out of holes, nor can we disassemble ourselves or not actually invest in our communities. And I really do believe that sometimes we're sitting and waiting for things to turn around, and the economics, we're waiting for this recession to end, especially for Tucson, which has been very slow to recover. But there are times where we actually need to be the ones that are investing in ourselves that demonstrate that we're actually here for the long haul and that it actually encourages others to invest as well. So I just wanted to say that we're certainly in favor of the bond moving forward, and we really appreciate this more.
Thank you. Dane Wohl?
Good morning, Chairman Bronson and members of the Board. I'm Dane Wohl. I proudly serve as the President of the YMCA of Southern Arizona. I've got three points I'd like to make today. First, I want to thank you. The partnerships that we have with Pima County allow us to serve over 200,000 Pima County residents each year, and we're, we're very appreciative. At the Y, we're for youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility, and we try to implement that by offering great early childhood education programs so that kids can thrive when they start kindergarten. We do it through programs like diabetes prevention, so that we can lower some of the health costs that are so significant to society today. And we do it by supporting the families of deployed soldiers that are protecting our country. I am here today because I am pro-bond. Not for any specific project, but I'm not sure the word is getting out. Our Board of Directors supports the bond. I've been going to bond meetings since 2007. I still had hair when I started going to some of those bond meetings. It's been put off, the '08 election, the '10 election, the '12 election. The needs are not going away. The needs are getting worse, and it's becoming more difficult to identify which projects to move forward on. To push this bond back is not going to help us have a, is not going to help the families, it's not going to help us have a stronger community. And so, I want to be a voice to say, please consider letting the voters decide on this bond and to, to move that forward. I know our Board of Directors will support that. We'll open up facilities for community dialogue and meetings and provide any leadership that we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brian Corbell?
Thank you for turning off your cell phone. I'm sorry. I thought it was off. That was horrifying. I apologize to everybody. My name is Brian Corbell. I am head of the company that owns and operates the River Park Inn and the Pueblo Gem and Mineral Show.
You've got a busy week ahead of you.
We do, thank goodness. Without the mineral show, we literally could not pay our mortgages. The hotel does really quite terribly, even though we put a lot of money into it. And I'm here to support the bond package going forward, and it's really tied to property taxes. Our property taxes are about $100,000. We have a hard time paying because of the economics of the business in Tucson. And I fully understand those individuals who have to pay property taxes on their residences. One of the reasons the, their tax rate goes up, therefore their property taxes go up, is that the commercial properties have done so badly over these years that their assessments have had to drop. And our property taxes may have dropped just a little bit, but that's very bad for commercial people, because they're dropping only because we're earning less money. We have a very hard time paying our mortgages and trying to keep profitable. And, and that's why our assessments have dropped. If our assessments were higher and we were paying more property taxes, it would be because we were making more money, and we would be thrilled. The more property taxes commercial places pay is a reflection that their profits are up, and they're making money and they're hiring people. And when I look at some of the elements in the bond fund, some of them will have nothing to do with our being able to make more money, but they obviously relate to the community having more advantageous facilities and programs. Others directly relate to the potential for projects like us and all of the mercs that, and all the property owners who have commercial property, to make more money and bear more of the property tax load, so the individual residents won't have to pay so much in property taxes. As an example, the gentleman who spoke about the Sonoran Desert, that is a truly major demand center for people to come and visit Tucson, whether they're coming from Phoenix or out of town. Those people eat in the restaurants downtown, pay sales taxes, pay gasoline taxes in the city because they've got to get back, and they also stay in hotels, so we can pay our people and hire more people. And I want to suggest that, in the interest of all of the individual residents who have to face paying taxes, that some of these programs would be extremely beneficial. The talk about the regional educational center of the West would be-
Sir, your, your time has expired. Can you wrap up quickly?
Yes, I certainly can. I'm sorry. And a lot of the sports facilities for the young people are also draw in these competitive programs from the region to play here, and they stay overnight. So I'd, I'd like to suggest that you give the citizens an opportunity to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Zarling?
Good morning, Supervisors. Chuck, my name is Jim Zarling. I've lived in Pima County for over 37 years. My wife and I own two businesses, one since 1986 and one since 1992 in Pima County. I currently sit on several nonprofit boards which focuses on children, people with barriers, healthcare, and animals, and as well as I'm on the Workforce Investment Board of Pima County. Why I'm here is to urge you guys for a bond election. I don't believe in raising taxes and all that stuff. We need to make something happen in this community. Over the 34 years my family has been here and enjoying our zoo, and I sit on the Reed Parks and Wildlife Society Board. And on that, while I was on that board, and I'm on that board, I was part of the strategic planning and was understanding that there was going to be a bond election for 2015. It was also, I found out that we were number two, second in the survey done by Pima County as far as expansion projects are concerned. Our project would boost our economy, to provide, can provide economic growth, not only in construction, which I happen to be in, one of the businesses is a construction company, but through the zoo's admissions, rentals, concessions, as well as help tourism, economic development, and quality of life for our community. I can tell you this, over these 34 years that I've been living here, and my friends and families from back east and Midwest come and visit me and visit my family, we've always taken them to the Zoo Desert Museum. The response from all of them is always a wow, but it's also saying that we could do more with it, which is what they want to do for us. We have over 6,000 visitors at the zoo this last year. We have 14,000 members, and I can, and I will be, as a Board Member, saying we will be there to support this bond and help in any way we can to help this election. In closing, I urge you all to vote in favor of the bond election in 2015, and allow the voters, as media being one voice, but all the voters in Pima County, the opportunity to make their voices heard in the bond election. I thank you very much, and have a fantastic-
Thank you. Those are all the speaker cards for call to the audience, so we are now moving on to the Board of Supervisors, sitting as the Board of Supervisors on the regular agenda item number six, approval of consent calendar. Madam Chair? Supervisor Miller? I move to pull items five and 11 for separate discussion and vote. Is there a, actually, did you, is there a second to that? I'll second. Are, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to the remainder of the items on the consent calendar, once pleasure of the Board.
We're measuring the second.
Motion in a second to approve the remainder of consent. Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. You needed, you were, we are now, was it item five you wanted to pull? Correct.
Item five and 11.
Five and 11.
Supervisor Miller, item five. On item five, we talked about this being a revenue, it's the, for folks, the audience, is the retroactive approval for an IDA with the town in Morana for the Pima Animal Care Center provision of animal control services. The questions I have are, first of all, you talk about it being revenue neutral, and we did hire a new director, and we hired a new veterinarian, and it doesn't explain, it talks about negotiations ongoing between the county attorney and Morana concerning the non-warranty clause, but it also doesn't explain how they're charged back. It says they're, they're charged for the licensing, the council's enforcement, but it doesn't say how this is done. Is it done in a square footage area? Is it done on the number of dogs? Is it done on the number of dogs? What is the, how is the usage charged back to Morana? And is this going to be an impact on our general fund in terms of, as the maintenance increases, as we build this facility, it's no secret that the operations and maintenance costs are going to increase. They already did tremendously, as we heard from Mr. Kozaczek at the City of Tucson not long ago, on the increase in maintenance costs before it was even built, I think it was before it was voted on. I'm just curious how this is going to be revenue neutral.
Mr. Huckleberry, Ms. Lacher?
Yes, Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, I think the term revenue neutral simply means that the town pays the county a certain amount of expenses incurred in excess of their licensing revenue. So, that's how it's revenue neutral, meaning that it's a cost of service utilization by the town, typically in the number of animals taken and pounded and over the period of time that we're examining. That was an answer to your question on the revenue neutral. Now, the issues that you raised in addition are the cost of operating and maintenance. And yes, as we construct the budget, as we did last year, there is a general fund subsidy that's provided to animal care. It increased significantly over the previous year simply due to the activities that were occurring in animal care with regard to the transition from euthanasia model of care to one of adoption, and that those costs have been incurred, they're ongoing, and will continue to be ongoing, and they need to be paid by all of the participating jurisdictions. The discussions that are occurring with the jurisdictions are typical with regard to, every year we enter into the same discussions with regard to their share of operating animal care, and each jurisdiction has the option to opt out of having the county provide animal care services, and so that option remains available to them, if they believe the costs are excessive.
And I did, I did note that, that was one item of concern, is that they're, they can terminate by either party without cause upon sixty days of written notice, and that would leave the burden upon whoever is left to participate in this. That's always been a concern of mine. And the other question I had was, there's a statement here that says, there's a fixed, the, the cost for the spay unit program will be allocated based on a fixed per capita percentage per jurisdiction. Is that by population, or is that by the number of dogs they have spaying unit or?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, it's typically an allocation that looks at where the span unit or services demands are greatest, with some minimum allocations to jurisdictions to ensure that everyone participates in the benefits of the program.
Okay, thank you. What's pleasure of the board on item five?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, any objections? Motion carries. Supervisor Carroll, just for the record, are you still with us?
Yes, Madam, I am here. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eleven on the consent calendar, Supervisor.
Okay, this is the item for Michael Gritzick. Apparently, he used to be the Regional Wastewater Reclamation Department Director, and he has been under contract overseeing the ROMP for several years, and I noticed this contract is, we're extending it another year. And my question is, he's getting paid ninety dollars per hour, he was a former employee, and he's spent, it's four years previously, and this is another year. Why haven't we, first of all, why haven't we absorbed that into the current director's job? And the second thing is, what happens when he leaves? Is everybody up to speed, has there been cross-training so that we don't have to continue to rely on a contract employee? We used to be employed by Pima County, and basically is coming back with a, you know, getting a second paycheck out of Pima County when we should have absorbed this into our current employee base.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, this contract will actually terminate in its entirety on December first of this year, so it's the last term of this agreement. The contract has been with the former director in transitioning the implementation of ROMP. He has some specialty functions that he's doing at this point in time for the balance of this year, and I could have Mr. Gritzick or Mr. Jenkins provide some details with regard to the tasks that he's wrapping up this particular time. And in regard to his, his services, yes, they're all being basically absorbed by the existing staffs, that's why this contract will turn in about ten months.
Thank you. What's pleasure of the board on this item?
I'm going to move to deny.
Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. What's pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
I'll second. Objections?
Same for that.
One objection by Supervisor Miller, any further objections?
If not.
Motion carries, Board of One. Moving on to the regular agenda, item seven, Board of Supervisors, Rules and Regulations, Amendments to the rules and regulations particularly related to Section K, participation by employees in public. What's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I have some points to bring up, do you want to wait for a motion first? Is there a motion?
Yeah, let's move to a motion.
Okay.
Can we?
Move.
To approve? I'll second. Supervisor Miller.
One of the things that were, we directed last time was to have the speaker cards changed, and they weren't changed, and we still have an agenda item number and an addendum item number, and I remember distinctly Supervisor Dallad, as is recommending that anyone who puts in a speaker card for a non-public hearing would automatically go to open call, which I believe is happening, but are we going to update? This was part of the direction, was to update the speaker cards, are those going to be updated? Are we just going to finish out using these?
I think we were waiting, well, let me ask, Ms. Pogon, are we going to update and when?
Chair. Chair Bronson, Supervisor Miller, the cards were updated. We changed the verbiage at the top to read, "Speakers may address the Board at call to the public on any topic." It is the discretion of the Chair to call upon speakers on items that are not designated as a hearing on the agenda, and we put a separate box on here now for them to designate call to the public.
I, I'm just concerned because there was, there's still confusion on an addendum item number, and I know that is at the discretion of the Chair, however, we have a lot of confusion over people. One group was allowed to speak to, excuse me, an item, that, an agenda item that was not a public hearing, and another group was, versus the group that wasn't in the same meeting, and so that's where the confusion all began, so that the whole point was to make sure that we had specific language, that if it was not a public hearing, that they would not be, that they should put in an open call. And if, and if they put it in and the Chair decides, "I don't want to let that person speak," does that automatically go to open call? I mean, is that upfront decided? Yes. Okay, prior, so people, when they put in agenda item, they don't know what they're going to be speaking to, except that if you decide you don't want to allow them to speak to the item, you'll move it to open call? Automatically. I think that's very confusing, but...
Is there any other comments? There's a motion on the floor to approve. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item eight, quarterly report on collections, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
On item eight, we had a delinquent balance from Mountain Star Sports of twenty-five thousand dollars in Keno Sports Complex. Just a question on that, are they still an approved vendor, or have they paid this bill since then?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, they're paying the bill because they were the holdovers for the team that left to El Paso, had a contract with us, an annual contract, they paid the entire rent contract, the contract required them to pay the utilities as well. And so, this twenty-five thousand dollars is really a rehrences on utilities. We've been in conversations with them pretty diligently, we actually reviewed all the bills, I think provided them about a fifteen-hundred dollar credit, and they now have agreed to pay the entire remaining balance as utilities.